They don't have.
That's what they said. Said they're gonna be a little bit tight for a while. That's a lot of money to have to pay back.
What is that?
In the event that we lose the internet, all the presentations and everything are on this, and you have a hard copy of everything.
We're ready. We are ready.
Teresa, thanks everyone.
I'll call this meeting of the Montague County Board of Education to order. Please rise for the pledge.
My divisions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we were anticipating an internet outage today, but it did not happen to this point. And we are on and we are live streaming this meeting. And in the event that we go off air, we wanted everyone out there, if you are watching, because some people do watch these meetings, to know that we didn't shut it off intentionally. So we're gonna try to make it happen, and hopefully, we can get through this meeting without interruption. So if it does happen, this will be recorded and available on our website. Okay, we have tonight a recognition, and it is the University High School Boys Cross Country 2023 State Championship Team. And University High Boys, our head coach is Ed Froenapple, and assistant coaches Josh Robinson and Barclay Castro. And the team members Ethan Conroy, Logan Conroy, Will Devault, Sam Denny, Jack Overfield, Colin Trolle, Tyler Umbridge, Jake West, Gavin Wharton, and Drew Zundell. If you guys could please come forward. Board member Kelly has a plaque to recognize you guys, and get some pictures and get it out on social media. Congratulations, guys.
Are you ragging on your coach now, tell me that?
What a question.
Seriously.
I'd like to thank everybody for having us again this year. We, this is our fifth year, fifth championship, cross-country boys championship in a row. So probably getting tired of seeing us here, but that's fine. We'll just have to make it happen anyway. But I'd like to thank the Board of Education for having us and greeting us again, and having our team here. Thank the guys for all their hard work to do it again this year. Like I said, with the fifth year, ours and coaches Josh and Barclay. New addition on the coaching staff is Barclay, so welcome her to the Board Education office here. So, thanks to everyone.
Oh yeah, we appreciate this, this recognition. You know, we like to represent the county, and not just the county, but also the state. And definitely honored to be here tonight. And, you know, every time we race, it's not just for us, it's for the school, the county, and the state. So we're really appreciative of the recognition.
Also, we also have Rich Senator Assistant Principal and Jeff Bailey in the background. So if they could come up too, we'd get them in the picture, I would think. And they also might say something about these kids.
Well, first and foremost, I don't think a lot of people understand that these young men, they don't just show up in August and start working and win state championships. Every year, I always tell them about this time of the year, how crazy I think they are, because every single day after school, in weather like this, they're leaving the locker room, getting ready to go out and train almost every day, and surely every week. This is a 365-day-year job for these young men. And not just them, our girls team, a storied program also, has won many, many state championships. And this year, we're state runners-up. And just the coaching staff speaks for themselves, what a dedicated group of three people, especially with our new addition that we had this year with Ms. Castro. And it's just, it honestly is the program that our school is so proud of, because year in and year out, they always are battling for a state championship. And I just wish people could see what they do year-round, to be able to have that hardware. It surely makes us proud every year at Cavill Midland on that Saturday, to watch them bring in the hardware. Just really prideful moments for University High School, for sure.
Anybody else?
Need more pictures? You want to say a free watch?
Gentlemen, we are proud of you. Okay. I know Mrs. Green really wanted to be here today, but she was feeling a little under the weather, so I stepped in. I'm not really sure exactly. I've never really went to a cross-country meet prior to being an assistant principal. And then when I saw what you guys do on the regular, with all the workouts, and then actually going to a cross-country track, was that we are very proud of you guys. You put the work in, not only academically, but athletically. So congratulations.
You're free. Released.
Good to see you. Thank you. Okay, you guys can run now, if you want to.
See you guys later.
Go do your homework, guys.
They'll be back, hopefully.
Probably.
I mean, they start out all rootsy-cheeked, and they end with gray, or then...
The only reason the girls don't win is because Morgantown.
The only reason they win is because it's just cross, get down, rival each other.
Yeah, exactly.
Superintendent, we have no delegations tonight, so let's move into reports, discussions, and follow-up action.
Okay, we are going to have a presentation this evening. We're gonna kind of hit you with three things, back-to-back-to-back. First, we're going to start with the DLR Group to talk to us about the preliminary budget for the Renaissance Academy. Something we've been waiting for now for quite a while, but we do have some solid numbers. So we're gonna share those with you this evening. And then that will be followed by a brief presentation from Rob Steptoe in relation to the bond referendum, and the numbers that he has put together for the board to review. And we will close with, again, a brief presentation from Tom Piercy with Bowles Rice, our legal counsel, on our bond referendum. And he will share with you a preliminary draft copy of the bond order with some of those numbers that they've been working on, inserted into the draft, into the draft copy. So the board won't be taking any action this evening, other than to see this. It'll give you an opportunity to ask questions, and then digest it over the holidays, so that when we come back in early January, we can present you with the final budget and the final bond order for your approval, should you choose to do that. So with that, I'm gonna go ahead and turn things over to John from DLR. And he drove to us today, all the way from Albany, New York, for this presentation. So, John, we appreciate the travel time and being with us, and look forward to your comments.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Carmo. Anything we can do to move Renaissance Academy forward. Good evening, Chair Laitl, members of the Board of Education, Dr. Campbell, and your leadership team. So finally, we're here with some numbers based on all of the work that we've done. Ah, it's working. Thank you. First of all, I want to talk to you about the difference between total project costs, construction costs, and all of the soft costs. And it's really important for everybody who's looking at this to understand that, particularly when they're comparing this with other projects, that they need to know what they're comparing it to, because on top of the construction costs, there are all sorts of other costs that are needed to complete a project. So when comparing, we should be really careful about that. So we have several components. We have the site preparation, the building construction, and we have furnishing equipments and other soft costs. And that's what makes up the total project cost. We don't just take these estimates that we prepare, particularly at this stage of a project lightly. And we do everything we can, given how little we actually know about the project, despite all the due diligence we've done, to make sure that we aren't just having one estimate, but we're having multiple eyes on it. So we had the site cost estimate. Comparable estimates were prepared by Taradon Corporation, who is our civil engineer on the project, highly experienced in the state, and by Winfield Strock, who is a gentleman who helped the state School Building Authority to update its cost allowances for schools recently, earlier this year. They actually came in within $200,000 of one another. There were some differences between the pieces, but essentially, we felt that we were very comfortable with that, after we had proved it and reconciled it. Building construction estimate was done by Forella Group, which is a firm in Virginia that works up and down the mid-Atlantic region, and who we worked with on a lot of projects. That was also reviewed with Williamson Schreiber. And Winfield Strock took a look at that in relation to the work he'd recently done for the state. For equipment and furniture, and you can imagine that there's a lot of equipment for a project like this with all of the CTE career pathways. So that was prepared by a firm named Diversified Educational Systems, Inc., that focuses on this type of work. It was reviewed with the DLR Group staff against other projects we've done with similar programs. And then our DLR Group interiors team looked at the furniture and equipment costs to make sure that they were in line. With the contingencies and other costs, we worked with your leadership team here to put those together, and with crews and associates, Rob Steptoe and Tom Parker of Bowles Rice, and then DLR Group's experience from other projects. So we put together, carefully put together, a total cost model, and we had all of the numbers that went into that model verified from a number of different directions. So let's start out with the site. And I know you're gonna jump to the bottom line, so we have a number of $33 million there. That is more than I expected. We do have, at this point, all of the actual site work, that's within the site work divisions of the spec, came to about $24 million. You will see this in the construction estimates as well. At this point, there's a 15% design contingency. What that means, it's an amount that is accounting for everything that we don't know so far, that we haven't developed all the drawings, we haven't developed all of the utility layouts, and so on. So that's an allowance for work that will come up. As you see us present to you future estimates, you'll see that design percentage will start going down, because we know more about the project. When we do a schematic estimate, it might be 10%, it might be 5% design development. Then when we get to the end of construction documents, and we're actually bidding the project, it goes to zero, because the project is destroyed. You'll see there, we have bonds and insurance costs that the contractor bears, and the site preparation subtotal. Unto that, we've applied escalation. Now escalation increases every year. We know that COVID caused a huge increase in escalation. It is stabilizing somewhat. So within our estimates, we have an escalation. And we're escalating appropriate to a completion date, or opening date, rather, of fall '27. So we have to be very careful. If that date starts to slip, then additional costs will likely be incurred because of increased escalation. So when you add all of those things together, along with a site contingency allowance, that would actually be put into the contract with the site work contractors, that brings you up to $33 million for the site. I would like to remind you all that we are developing here, the first building on the site. We've been careful to try to limit the amount of work just to what is strictly necessary for the first building. But hard as it may seem now, those costs will be spread over future buildings that occur on the site. So they will not experience the same site development costs that you are incurring here with putting a road up and building a new road up from Blue Horizon, and putting roads in from the other side, and doing a lot of excavation. So these are all the standard divisions of building construction. The trade total is about $66 million. Design contingency in there, about $10 million at 15%. And then below that, we have the same model with escalation coming in at about $11 million, and the total building cost coming in at 90, almost $92 million. Next slide, please. So when you put the site and the building construction together, you end up with a total of just over $125 million construction for the building and the site. Furnishings equipment, I already mentioned that that would be a substantial amount, given the nature of the program for Renaissance Academy. We have totaled that up to be just over $11.4 million, which is within range for what we typically see for facilities like this. And I will remind you that Dr. Campbell has stated clearly that we will replace all of the programs that are currently at M-Tech, and that they, of course, will be elevated and transformed. And so this assumes that all of those programs would have new equipment. Let us start working in hope that we will be able to get donations, we will be able to find equipment from other locations, and maybe some of the equipment can be moved. Other soft costs are, let's see, what have we got there? Owner's contract management, so there's a number in there for a clerk of the works to be in the field all the time through construction. There is some numbers for owner financing. We've got regulatory processes. There's a state fire marshal fee, which we anticipate being just around $100,000. Then we have design fees. Unfortunately, we can't work for free much as we would like to, and there are a lot of engineers and other consultants involved in that. You will hire your own commissioning agent, we've accounted for that in there, and a contingency for unknowns that may occur during construction. At the bottom there, you will see an At the bottom there, you will see an owner's contingency of 3% at this point, which is just about $3.25 million. And then inspections and testing and all of the things that are done to make sure that the construction is being done according to specifications. So that brings you there to a total for soft costs of 17.5 million. And when we put all of that together, we end up with that bond proceeds that will go to fund the project of $139,163,779.91. I apologize for that, that's just the way the numbers come out. Questions? Yes?
So from the shareholder group, could you go back to the slide where you have the programs?
Yes.
Program list?
This one. No, the furnishings and equipment has all the programs. This one?
Yeah, this one.
Yes.
So between our academic team, our current technical center team, and the shareholder groups, I don't want to say these were the winners, but these were the winners of the highest interest.
Yes.
So the addition would be that we would have dedicated agricultural program on there.
Yes, that's the one that's...
I'm trying, so you've even got the agri, lab space and farming. We have the carpentry HVAC plumbing and an electrical program, which we currently have at our site we have now, only as you said, it would be a different type of excelled offering. Graphic design, which we currently have. And then our health sciences division, which some of those things we have currently. Culinary arts, and then the information IT lab and esports, which I think the IT lab's a little bit, law and public safety, which we currently have only, when, I think when people think of these programs, they don't realize they're in a room half the size, maybe with a lot of technology in there, but unable to serve the high amount of students we hope to be serving. Welding, and then I'm trying to think, is there something else in there?
You've got transportation, automotive technology at the bottom there.
Okay.
And then the one thing that I would say is an add to what you have at MTEC is all of the STEM labs. So you've got four STEM labs, because obviously, STEM and college prep, as well as all the things that are currently added.
Well, and the robotics also. We don't really have a dedicated robotic program currently. So I know that there were a lot of other choices, because, you know, we went through all those cards when we did our mock sheriff, and I know everyone did that. So are you planning on these being able to be crossed over into some of the areas that may not be represented here as the main focus?
So with the type of facility that it is, and the purpose that it's serving, which is constantly changing, as the local and regional economy is changing, the interests of the students, technology, innovation, all of those things, this has to be a building that can constantly change with minimum disruption and minimum cost. So it is being designed almost as a work in progress, because it will be constantly changing. Also, as we've mentioned before, we are already designing where an addition would go and how it would attach to the building, so that additional career clusters, additional pathways can be added over time. And I've mentioned it before, but most of these facilities we've done, within five years, they're planning an addition, because the demand is so great and there are additional needs that they need to fulfill.
Well, because I know one of the things that was, that's been discussed, I know President Lidle's mentioned it before, is that we do have some manufacturers that have come to the area that want to partner with us. So this does not, just because that total particular manufacturing isn't listed there in the way they may be thinking about it, or the public may be thinking about, that doesn't mean that's not still going to happen.
Absolutely.
Or that there's not going to be opportunities, maybe, for in-person educational opportunities for people at those sites and...
Internships and, absolutely. And for example, I think the agriculture is particularly in response to the needs of a local business that has recently moved to the area, and who, obviously, you will all and we will consult with as we develop the design for that space.
Well, and I think also, the way you have some of these listed is so that we may be able to avail ourselves of federal dollars in different subsets in the government that's put money into trying to advance some of these careers.
You may also find as many of our clients to contributions of in-kind and equipment, and then staff support from some of your industry partners.
So, because I guess what I'm, the reason I'm asking all this for clarification is I think there might be folks that would look at this and say, well, with a few exceptions, it's pretty much the same thing, but it really isn't the same thing.
It isn't the same thing.
Of the level of opportunity that's going to be in these programs now, and partnerships that we have, it's really grown a lot through the shareholder experience.
I think the other thing that is very different about Renaissance Academy is that it's open and engaging. So there's a great deal of transparency. In MTEC now, most things are behind a brick wall. In this Renaissance Academy, there will be huge relationships between different, these different programs, and students will carve their own pathways between them, and things will happen simply because they're next to one another, in a way that is not happening now. And I think the mixture also of students who are headed to college, students who are going into the military, or going straight into industry, and those who don't know yet what they want to do, will create a sort of a synergy and a dynamism that will be very powerful.
To me, this is, in some ways, it's a giant, we used to do it, volunteered to do it as parents when our children were in elementary school, a giant exploratory program, so that students can find their way, and all these hands-on experiences and other things you're going to be able to do are going to enhance any career or educational decision that you make. So I keep trying to say to folks, this is for everyone, this is not an exclusionary pathway where only certain students with certain interests are going to be participating. This is an every high school student opportunity, so that they can grow their, just grow their mindset on what's out there, so.
It's inclusionary, it's not exclusionary.
I also, just to add on to that, I see most of the programs that we have currently at MTEC are included in, to some degree, in this, with the exception of a few, like, off the top of my head, I'm thinking about the marketing and advertising, commercial art division that's there, the child development program that's there, the like future teacher programs that are there. And I know we talked about a partnership with WVU with sending teachers through this program for hands-on, whatever, but, and I guess that also comes down to what's going to happen with MTEC at that time. But do these have a role in this school, or do we just, are we just looking at not fostering those at all? And then what about these programs are, maybe I'm getting too complicated, but are bigger and better and more advanced than what we do have at MTEC? And I do agree with Nancy that people are going to want to understand that this isn't just $133 million MTEC.
Yes.
If that makes sense.
Yes. So first of all, the graphic design does relate to the program that they have now.
Is that up there? Did I miss anything?
Yes, it's under Arts, AV Technology and Communication. So that is intended to be part of that. I think I would ask Dr. Campbell to answer that question in terms of how the kids, the students, rather, in the school will actually perceive it and how it will be transformed from their perspective.
Well, I think the one thing to keep in mind in relation to just the career and technical education aspect of it is, at the outset, we want to maintain the programs that we have, but we want to raise the level of technology that these kids are going to be experiencing. And so, you know, as we've visited some of the, what I would call sister schools that we've seen, you're looking at technology levels, equipment levels, that are significantly more advanced than what we currently have in our current facility. I think John gave a great description of the tech center, and I thought it was really eye-opening for our principal when he had a chance to visit some of the facilities similar to this. He talked a lot about the limitations that he saw with the programs at MTEC because of the space that we were in. And he talked a lot about the opportunities that our kids would have to integrate with other programs with a facility like the ones that we saw and like the design that you've seen in this particular program. The other component to this is that we have included the high-level STEM coursework in this particular model, which is different than some of the places that we've seen. Others have had it incorporated in it as well, too. With the concept being here, and I think Mrs. Walker did a great job of kind of describing that and laying that out, to say that this facility is for all students, where we don't see a lot of the STEM concentration in our current facility. A majority of our science and our technology and our engineering program, for example, our high-level math courses, those types of things are housed in our home schools, in our Morgantown High, University, in our Clay Patel. This is going to give those students who are pursuing those high-level STEM career the opportunity to do that at this facility, as well as participate in some of these hands-on learning experiences that they would not get in our current setup, in our current model. And so we're really bridging that gap between high-level STEM education and significantly high-paying career technical education, job preparation for the future. Our hope is, and this is a lot of the discussion that we've had, is what will drive a lot of the curriculum, both in the STEM side as well as the career and technical education piece of things, will be our local industry to say, this is what we need from your kids, and we'll work with them to really rewrite curriculum, so that we are creating a pipeline of opportunity for our local industry, that when our kids are finished with, especially the career and technical education side of things, that they'll be prepared to walk into some of these local businesses and industry, and these industries won't have to retrain or train these young people to fit into whatever the industry is that they're going to be working in. Now, some of the programs that you talked about, that you don't necessarily see up here, we're really still trying to figure out how we're going to incorporate them, whether that's best suited to return back to their home schools in a model like we're using with MedEd currently, or whether there's going to be opportunities within the space that we've created at this point, that we can incorporate them and absorb them into this particular facility at this point in time.
But we're not talking about cutting them, cutting these programs from our...
There will be no programs eliminated.
Yes.
It's simply a decision as to where we think they're best fit for those kids and their best opportunities will be in their current programs.
Okay, like a law and safety, I guess, is another one that...
And Dr. Campbell, could I just add a couple of things here for clarification? Because I do see very clearly that we go to what we know, which are the listing of these programs, which is absolutely, we're representing what we currently have. But could I just point out, for example, when we say hospitality and tourism, we really don't have anything for tourism. It is huge, and we're going to use this opportunity here. There are numerous jobs in the tourism industry in this state, and, you know, we do have some wonderful culinary arts programs at, of course, MTEC and even at our schools. Tourism is going to just become a central focus here of what we're doing. When you look at your health sciences, and yes, those are the ones that we know, and Dr. Campbell referred to MedEd, we have tripled the interest. We just did our survey of interest and met with students. We filled up the entire library at Morgantown High and the entire space at University High. The interest in MedEd has tripled. We're now back at the table with WVU to expand and ask them if they can support more, because we were capped at 15 per school this year. We could, we have seats and we have interest in this type of programming, because what they see, and what you're talking about, Dr. Campbell, is that opportunity to stack your credentials. So you have every level of student that might be interested in one position, but also different types of positions that they now see as a stepping stone in combining all of those things. So at first glance, when you see this, you recognize what you know, but I will say to you again, the agriculture and the pieces that we're going to add there, the hydroponic labs that we can expand on, the property allows us to do all of those things that we don't have. And then I know specifically, we are looking at a pathway for a bigger, better version, if I might say that, of what we do to train and develop our own teachers. We are working on that right now. Certainly, we have a great little program with childcare. That could be about 10 times more significant. And we're being a bit selfish, of course, because we need teachers, and we see this opportunity as a way to fold some of that in here. There are so many different programming ventures that we're going to get into, and I think there's so much more to explain and add to this conversation. I know this evening is about looking at what we have and looking at numbers and all of that important information, but I could talk a lot about all of these opportunities and see how we're multiplying those opportunities, and we will be doing that. I know that is something Dr. Campbell and several of us are working on, but I just want to make sure that is out there, that, you know, it's easy to see what we have and look at it, and I agree 100%. This is not your mother's MTEC, or however we want to say that. It is that times, you know, 100 with the opportunities there. So I just, I know we need more. I don't know that we have that in full preparation for you this evening, but I think almost every meeting coming forward, we need to have that out there for you and for the public at large. But right here, you know, information and technology and esports, we have one little program over there, adding that robotics, expanding that. Again, the interest in that program has multiplied by 10. So our students are signing up for that now, and it's now become part of the CTE curriculum. So that will even help more students that want to get that credential in all of this. The manufacturing, that is just a very small piece of that, and the entrepreneurship that we're going to wrap around all of these. So there is so much more to this, and this doesn't do it justice. It gives you numbers, it gives you the facts as we know them, but this is such an exciting path forward for our students and our community here, and we can't wait to share more of that here. I just want to make sure that was clear.
One thing that I like that you've said all along is the adjustability of it, because what we're looking at now may not be the whiz-bang five years from now.
Absolutely.
What I like about it... I like about it is we can change gears and kind of fit into what's coming along. And the other thing that I wanted to touch on, and I know Dr. Campbell and I have talked about that, I've gotten calls from band directors and worried about, how's it going to hurt the band program? So I told Dr. Campbell that I was going to give him a chance to explain all of that. And it's not going to affect it, but I'll let you do the...
No, it really shouldn't. I mean, the concept behind the alternating day schedule really actually accommodates the band and music programs in a better way than a half-a-day schedule where you're worried about travel time and all those different types of things. So this actually works in favor of those types of programs. And so, you know, that's certainly, not that that was planned with this facility, because we made that change schedule-wise several years ago at MTEC. And it was in direct response to things like that. We saw students who were in band and music programs inhibited from participating in career and technical education because of the type of schedule that we were operating on. And so, we made that decision several years ago to go to the alternating day schedule, which has greatly helped, well, not just band, lots of different programs.
Right, right.
But specifically to your question, and that's always a big concern, is the music programs. And we intend to maintain that schedule as we move forward with this. So it really will accommodate and continue to accommodate our music programs.
Yeah. I want to get it out in the public so that there's no confusion. Nothing's going to change as far as that goes. So that way, they're not hearing it remotely or the rumor mill or whatever. So thank you for addressing that.
Absolutely.
In the silence yet.
I just can't wait to see the first robot we build in the robotics lab that's manufactured by our advanced manufacturing group, that's programmed by our video gaming and coding group, that goes behind a wall and does law enforcement video camery. I mean, it's not a, it's not, this is such a, when you start thinking about the collaboration of these different parts of technical education and STEM education, they can get together where you have somebody that's going to go to college and be an engineer, be a physicist, be a, whatever they're going to be, to be able to get in and do this stuff in college, have the kids on site that aren't going to go to college, manufacturing the stuff that the kids are, and just the whole, it's just exactly what happens. It's exactly what happens in the real world. All these pieces and parts have to come together, making these collaborations, showing that we can do it as kids. The whole idea of getting this working so our advanced, so our kids, one big thing this is going to do, our kids are leaving West Virginia because they want to go places where these things are reality. Cambridge, Massachusetts, that's reality there. Stanford, California, that's reality there. The kids are growing up in educational environments, where they understand that no matter what spectrum they are, they're part of something greater, because they can collaborate with different kids. At this point, we have AP kids, we have kids that are learning to weld. Today, they had welding competition. All these things can come together in this facility. We don't have that now. We have block classrooms, traditional teaching methods. As a general whole, this changes it all. This takes Morgantown and makes it somewhere where people want to bring their businesses to, because they see the vision. Now, we just got to get this out there and say, this isn't just MTEC. This is kids building stuff. The kids that come out of the carpentry, building buildings, manufacturing buildings, for people who are dreamers that design stuff to be built right here in Morgantown, in Mon County, I guess I should say. It's way bigger than, this discussion is way bigger than just, you know, just one piece, this piece, that piece. It gives us a chance and gives our kids a chance to dream and to define education. So it's way more. And when we can get people to see that vision and start to buy into that and start to see that the additional taxes that we are going to pay, I'm going to pay additional taxes willingly, because I know it's going to bump incomes. It's going to bump, it's just going to change Montague County, North Central, West Virginia, when this facility's finished. So we need to look at it that way. We can't look at it as far as what, you know, what limits are there. We got to start looking the other side, see what visions can be dreamed of and what answers we can come out of.
And my thing is, it's, there have always been students who have been able to excel and cross through all these other areas with their other advanced academics and move forward. There have been some students who may not have been able to navigate through that. And now, we're going to be able to help all students navigate through that. Because, I mean, if you just look at even some of the students and past attendees and people from this county who've gone out across, you know, the nation and the world and done amazing things, that all started here. So it's not like they didn't have a lot of the basis of what they needed, and they weren't able to dream, but they could not always tie it all together here. So in my mind, this will give, when you brought up the engineer, electrical engineering, and I'm looking up there and I see three or four different things that are all going to go together for those students who are doing that. And that's something that's sorely lacking in industry in the world right now. Our electrical engineering, for some reason, is not considered a very romantic career. And a lot of people really aren't looking at it when there's a great need for it. So I just, I really think this is going to help families and students that may not think they can mesh all this together, do it. And that, to me, is the biggest, one of the biggest things this is going to be able to do, because this is a no-boundaries world. This building is a no-boundaries world, and that will eke out into our traditional schools where people are now, and then go on down through to the middle school, hopefully, when we're able to transform our current building into that middle school area. So those students can start earlier on doing things that they're more interested in doing and marrying all of that together. So this is just the beginning.
I said you had mentioned electrical engineering. When you say that, people think, I'm going to get my house wired or my business wired. Electricity is way beyond that, and it all starts with, you got to understand it before you go beyond. I mean, look at all the electronics we have here now. That didn't, if everybody that learned how to do that was, well, I've got to wire my house, that's why I did that. So it's, you know, it's very expensive.
Okay, Superintendent, we have another presenter coming, I guess, in... Actually, we have two. So John, you're going to stick around, right, in case there's some more questions?
Poor John.
Poor John.
All right. Hey, Rob, are you on the line?
Can you hear me okay, Dr. Campbell?
Board members, can you hear Rob?
Can't.
Okay. The board members can hear you, and we are streaming, and they told us that they can hear you pretty well there, too. So if you do break up for some reason, I'll interrupt.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and Teresa, would you please advance from the cover page to the bonding capacity page, and let me know when you're there?
She is there.
Okay, great. All right. I think this is a really important place to start and understand. We're looking at a story here, and the story is where you were in 2004 when you issued the 50 million or so and had the 3 million outstanding at the time, 3.8 or so. And really, there are about four key metrics that have improved over the past 20 years. You know, we'll start with the first one, the property assessed valuation. They've almost tripled, going from 2.6 billion to just over 7 billion. So that is a metric that you want to see and that direction you want to see. The debt limit, we all know, is the constitutional 5%. Again, you have 131 million in bonding budget basically in '04, now you have 350 million. Outstanding debt is down from '04, as you see. And if you walk down through there, you'll see population has grown by almost 25,000, 24,000. I think the other really important point to think about here for everyone is that per capita personal income and where it was in 2004 compared to where it was in 2021, which is the most recent census information that we have, it's basically doubled. So putting all of that together, that is, that allows your tax base to go up. So Teresa, can we move to the next slide? That's our historical class two levy rates. And again, this tells another story. You know, if you look, obviously, we all know if the tax base goes up, the levy rates required go down. And so, if you look and notice, you'll have the two tables there. You have the fiscal year and the class two regular excess and bond levy rates, and then the totals column. In every one of those columns, when your tax base goes up, you see there in 2003, 2004 where you were, and then look down to 2023 through 2024, they've all lowered themselves. And so, the next table to the right there is your total assessed valuation. And that, again, that is your purchase power, where you're able to lower levies and yet, you know, have a larger bonding budget. One thing I neglected to say back on that first slide, Teresa, maybe we could go back for just a second. One of the ratios or the metrics that you want to look at is this outstanding debt as a percentage of your assessed valuation. Back in 2004, even while you had the 53,865,582 outstanding, it was only a 2.05% of your 5% constitutional bonding budget limit. If you were to borrow what is being needed for the project through bond proceeds, plus the outstanding debt, the 25,634,185 that's outstanding, that's the 2019 bonds that the school board refinanced back in 2019, but originally, those are the 2004 bonds. So if you add the not to exceed borrowing amount of 142,614,000, plus the outstanding bond of the 25,634,185, that gives you your 2.40% of that constitutional limit. So you're still, you know, you're still less than half, you're still below half of the 5% constitutional debt limit. So I just wanted to be sure that we covered that. Let's go now, Teresa, could we go to, I think we're good with historical levy rates and two, let's go to the slide three, the estimated levy calculations.
We're there, Rob.
Okay, great. All right. Let's just focus on a couple of things here. Above there, that's your, those are your totals for each class of taxable property in the county. And they're weighted, they have a weighted ratio there. You'll see the 7 billion, 6 million, 654,954, that's your total taxable assessed valuation. And then the 218,7437. And so, we do our thing, we go and get preliminary rates and estimated debt service and so forth. So let's just look at, let's just look down below that for a second. You'll see the A and B dated 11,12024, 6% not to exceed. You'll see a 10,0365,000, and then you'll see 11,401,500. Okay, that's the constitutional allowance that is required, 10% allowance for tax delinquencies, exonerations, discounts and so forth, that is collected. As I've mentioned before, you know, once you get into collecting these surpfunds, when they get to a certain level of the next fiscal year's debt service, you can adjust down your levy rates. It's a discretionary situation for you all, you know, if your tax collection account has a certain amount in it. So I don't get into the weeds too much there, but that 11,401,500, that's your, at 6%. Now, below that is the market. That's where the current market is. And that, as of last week, was a 4%, not a 6%. And so, look over at 9,152,55. Right there, you're looking at roughly 2.3 million in lower debt service. Now, the reason we have to do this not to exceed is we have to be conservative in our, with our numbers for the bond election order, because we just, we won't know, we won't know what the market looks like, we won't know what interest rates and underwriter bids will look like until well after the bond election order is adopted and the levy is approved in May. So I just wanted to point that out. If you go right of, the NBC stands for municipal bond commission, and so that's your 110% adjustment that is required, you'll see the class one in particular. Look at the class two levy rate, that's 10.40% for $100 in assessed property valuation. Let's go, let's take that part over to the last slide, number four. And here, under that, under A, the not to exceed, what we have to include in the bond election order, you'll see your 10.40% for $100 in assessed valuation. And then we've got the three scenarios here for a residence appraised at $100,000, but assessed at 60%. And then, a home appraised for $200,000, assessed at $120,000, which is the 60% assessment rate. And then the $300,000, assessed at $180,000. You'll see down here below that, when you carry out those calculations, it's basically, it's the 10.40% times whatever the assessed value of that appraised home is. And so, the annual levy projected here, for a $100,000 home would be $62.40. And then, for a home appraised at $200,000 but assessed at $120,000, you'll see $124.80. And then finally, the $300,000 home appraised but assessed at $180,000 would be $187.20. And so, just wanted to sort of walk through how everything kind of flows through these numbers and calculations and statistics. I do want to mention, we are assuming a 30 and 3/4 year structure for the bonds. And so, that will allow the school board to, you know, make each annual year of debt service more spread out and more reasonable for the residents. And also, it needs to be roughly and generally level debt service so that it's predictable. And that's what, that's what makes a safer transaction as well, is having lower debt service annually, but also having predictable level generally debt service as well. So I can stop here. Oh, one more thing, timing, I want to cover about timing. We, obviously, we... Um, we, obviously we, because levy revenues can, can only be corrected once, once uh, once very specific processes occur. You know, you go get your levy letter on the bond side, um, and then you all get your proposed schedule of levy uh rates and budget um out in March, and then um, those are approved and certified, and then you're laying the levies in April and so forth, but collections don't begin until July the first. Um, there is a timing, um, there's a timing assumption here with, with how we're looking at everything. Um, and that is because levy revenue cannot be corrected until um later on, around July first of twenty twenty-five, yet the site work uh needs to begin, I believe, um, maybe in the summer of twenty twenty-four, uh, to keep the project on schedule. Bonds would need to be issued uh in the fall of twenty twenty-four. Um, and so in doing that, uh, the board would uh finance some of the uh interest costs uh in what's called capitalized interest in order to make uh their first semi-annual payment um, uh, on the bonds on June the first, two thousand twenty-five. Um, and, and so that's just, that's just part of um how we've been looking at uh the timing situation. So I will step out of the way, um, and happy to um answer questions, um, and I know that Piercy also um would like to talk about um, uh, bond election order and uh the parameters and so forth.
Do you wanna ask questions?
I don't have any questions, Derek. I was gonna say, let's go ahead and let uh counsel talk, and then we'll go from there.
Uh, Tom, the board, the board uh is okay with, uh, just rolling directly into, into you.
Perfect. Well, well, thanks Superintendent, and can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. So we, we should, you should have a, a bond election order in front of you, and, and as the Superintendent mentioned at the beginning of, of the meeting, this is very much still a draft, um, but it, it's coming together and, and really is the result of all the hard work put in by the design team, Rob and, and his team, and then the Superintendent and staff. And so really, this document is going to reflect um, the, the numbers and the projects that were just described, but, but also will be, uh, include a sample ballot that's ultimately gonna be before the voters in May if it's approved by the board, board. And so, uh, we don't have to go through every word, but I did wanna hit some high points. Um, if you look on the first page in section three, um, you'll see two bracketed numbers, and brackets appear throughout, that's just because, as we said, it's a, it's a draft, but we expect these to be close if not final. And it reflects uh a total project cost of one hundred fifty-nine million four hundred and forty thousand dollars. That's based on the estimate that was provided by DLR and the design team. Um, and then right after that, you'll see that we have a not to exceed amount, the principal amount in, in bonds of one hundred and forty-two million six hundred and forty thousand. And so you'll notice there's a, a, a modest gap between the bond amount and the project cost, and we'll get into the details on how that's covered here in a few pages. Um, if you turn to the second page, um, you'll see the different classes of property and the aggregate assessed valuation for each class and then the total. And this really goes to Rob's point about bonding capacity. You can see there's approximately twenty-five million dollars in outstanding bonds and then an additional six million dollars in unbonded indebtedness from the school board as of today. Um, when combined with a hundred and forty-two million dollar bond issuance that's being proposed, you can see we're still significantly under the five percent cap. That cap, when you do the math, is approximately three hundred and fifty million dollars. So just wanted to reiterate the point, under the constitutional limitations and the statutory limitations, you have significant capacity to issue these bonds. Down in section six, you'll see again the not to exceed amount. So this is the maximum amount of bonds that voters will be asked to approve. And we do expect uh this, this to be the number of the bo, or, or the amount of the bonds that will be issued, although the board preserves the flexibility to issue any number under that, um, if, if the full amount is not needed. Um, you'll see in section seven in bold, we have the uh election, and this order does call for an election on the bond issue, uh, for Tuesday, May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. That, of course, is the primary election. In section eight, you'll see the, the maximum parameter, parameter for the interest rate, that's six percent. And this goes to the point that Rob made, currently market rates are around four percent for a bond issuance of this size and type. Um, but we wanna preserve some, some cushion there, uh, due to, to, you know, market changes or, or changes in the municipal bond, uh, market generally, uh, that, that gives us about two hundred basis points to work with between now and the issuance date. Uh, we hope and, and expect frankly, the, uh, the interest rate, the actual interest rate, to be significantly lower than six percent. And then finally, the maximum term of the bonds of thirty years, or thirty and three-quarters years. Again, that extra three-quarters is needed to address capitalized interest or interest payments you'll need to make before, uh, the first principal payment. And so, um, moving on to the third page, this is really the heart of the bond election order. This, this chart describes the project and then the, the, kind of the sources and uses to see how we're gonna come up with the funds sufficient to complete this project. So on the left column, you'll see it's a description of the Renaissance Academy, and this went through um several revisions through the, through the, the board, through uh DLR and, and Rob and myself. We want a concise summary of the project here because ultimately this is what the voters are gonna see and what they're gonna be asked to, to, to vote on. Of course, the third uh column is the location, and the fourth column has estimated cost. And, and you'll see that number is slightly lower than the number we provided above, and that's simply to address the cost of issuance of the bonds that will be added. Scrolling down to the second row of the chart, this, this really describes the, the funding sources. So the total estimated project cost comes in at one hundred and fifty-nine million four hundred and forty thousand. And so how do we get there? Well, I'm gonna start at the bottom, there's the estimated cost of issuance, an amount of four hundred and eighty-three thousand and change. There's the project cost to be funded by bond proceeds, an amount of one hundred and forty-two million, one hundred and fifty-six thousand and change. And then here's where we come up with that, that delta between the two numbers I described in section three, the sixteen million eight hundred thousand and other sources that is gonna go to fund this project. So what does that mean? Well, we've intentionally kept it very broad because we want the, the board to have all potential options open to it to fund this project. Um, we've been discussing at a high level the issuance of lease purchase obligation, obligations in the approximate amount of fourteen million eight hundred thousand, and then also uh equity contribution or, or a, a contribution from the board in the amount of two million to get us there. And that's not to say that's what it has to be. It could be less than that if the project does not require that much funding. It could be more than that if the, if the project requires more and we have to seek other sources. But I also wanna note, this could include SBA funding, this could include federal grants, state or local grants, private in-kind donations from maybe interested business owners that wanna contribute to this project. And so that is really the bucket of funding that, that we'll have to have in order to complete this project, but the source of that funds will be determined uh sometime in the future prior to the issuance of the bonds. Going to the next page, um, I, I, I wanted to get down to section eleven. This is really important because as you're probably aware, um, at its meeting uh on Monday, on the eleventh, the SBA approved the, the inclusion of its name in the bond election order and ballot. And so what that means, the SBA has blessed this document to allow it to, uh, to, to appear before the voters. Now, I wanna be very clear though, that these bonds are not contingent on any award from funds from the SBA or any commitment from the SBA, and there was clear about that as well. The, the contingency that does have to be satisfied however, is at the time of issuance, the board has to be satisfied that it has amounts sufficient in, in your reasonable discretion to undertake and complete the project. And that's important, not just practically, but also a requirement under federal tax rules. And so that is what's gonna allow us to go to market and issue these bonds, and really having the sources from that sixteen million eight hundred thousand estimate, having those funds available from whatever source i- is really the key to issuing the bonds. Finally, I, I'll go to the next page on section twelve. You'll see there's some estimated uh levy rates for each class of property, and this is based on the work that Rob and his team has done, and this is based on, of course, cents per a hundred dollars in valuation. Now, this may not be the actual uh levy rates. We, we hope and expect they will be lower, but this is what the voters are gonna be asked to approve based on the parameters, the, the not to exceed principal amount, the not to exceed interest rate, and the not to exceed term. And so all of that together, I'm gonna skip ahead a few more pages to page seven, gets us to our sample ballot. And as you'll see from the sample ballot, this is real, very much just a repeat of the information we've already covered, but this is the text of, of the document that will actually be on the ballot and that the voters will see, and of course includes all of the same information in terms of project description, the sources and uses, and the technical details about how this project is going to be completed, including the levy rates uh that are estimated for the voters. And so there is more to this document than that, a lot of it deals with federal, federal tax law, the state constitution and, and state statutes that are required for bond election orders. But I wanna pause there and ask if there's any questions at all, um, about anything I covered or maybe did not cover.
So my question would be, if we were, the amount that we're going out and asking for permission to bond up to, that may not be the actual number. We may, if we're able to secure, let's say we secure forty million dollars in grants, we actually could, could go through the process and it may be the bond cost will be much less to the voters because we're, we're able to get these other funds committed.
That's absolutely correct. So, so to be clear, you wouldn't be allowed to have a penny more than the, the maximum amount, but you could have any amount less. And so if the, if, if the time between when this order is adopted or, or even the voters approve it and the issuance of the bonds, that you realize some funding source, whether it be state, federal, local, private donations, then yes, the bond amount can be lowered by a corresponding amount, or whatever amount's appropriate to get the project done. And the gatekeeper at that point would be the board. You, just because the voters approve these bonds does not mean the bonds are, are issued. It, it means the board has additional steps to take to issue the bonds, but it has to be within the parameters approved by the voters. So you are correct, that the bonds could be less than the not to exceed principal amount, and if that was the case, it would have a trickle-down effect, and of course the, the levy rates would be lower. Um, but, but the maximum amount a, approved by the voters, the board would not be able to issue above that amount without another vote, uh, uh, of, of, of the Mon County voters.
Yes, I think what our voters are gonna know, what is the maximum amount it will cost me individually for properties that I own, and what are we really gonna get for that? So, um, I think for them to know that, and, and I think they can look at the board's past track record, we, they approved a higher excess levy rate, and we did not assess it that highest rate for the past ten, twelve years probably. We haven't, because we looked at how much money we needed to go forward for programs, people, uh, commitments we'd already made, we adjusted the levy rate to that. So I think we have a track record of being fiscally responsible and frugal, if you will, uh, even though when you talk about these amounts, frugal doesn't even sound like a word that goes with it, that we've been able to do that with our voters and our shareholders in the community. So I think all those are important points that as people look at this financial outline that they may have to make personally, um, the amount per homeowner really is not an overwhelming amount. If you're talking between fifty to two hundred dollars a year for a project of this scope, and with a possibility of it actually being less, and it can even be less just if the build, business base grows, without us having to reduce any bond amount. Uh, I think that's really important and, and it's difficult to explain all this, I know Rob's using all these technical big words, uh, but I think really part of what's gonna be our educational responsibility is to try to break this down into ways people can, can grasp at all, because it is kind of overwhelming. And I know we spent a lot of time doing that last time, and, and we had volunteers in the community who could uh provide information and put it out there and ask, ask for things in a different way than the board legally is able to.
I agree. I think if you, I mean, cut to the chase, you know, on a two-hundred-thousand-dollar home, this is what you're gonna be paying every year, three hundred or whatever that mean, keep it simple so that people can look at it and say, all right, I'm, it's worth it to me to, to pay fifty dollars more per year to see this happen, or seventy dollars more per year, or whatever that, that number is. I think when it comes down to it, a lot of this is great, but the average person's gonna look at that and go, I have no idea what that elephant just said. So I, um, I think if we can keep it simple, concise, here's what you get for your whatever, you know, per year.
And, and Mr., uh, Mr. Kelly and Mrs. Walker, I think also if you look back at the levy rate and, uh, the class two bond levy rate in oh-three, oh-four was at ten-point-five-zero cents per one hundred, you know, that's generally in the same range where it is now. Um, and even at the higher not to exceed, which we're, we're, we're hopeful that it will be closer to the eight-point-three-four cents, uh, you know, and then, and then the, the assessed, the assessed amounts of the fifty and the hundred and the hundred fifty um for the, for, for residences valued in those ranges. Um, so because you, because that tax base has grown so much, um, and, and it's been twenty years since that uh last issuance, um, it, it, it really does increase your, your, your bonding budget, um, and, and, and still keep levy rates, um, um, quite reasonable.
The one thing I keep mentioning continuously with this uh project is the fact that we're, we got the cart uh rolling and the horse has still gotta catch up as far as our funding sources go. We can't get an answer from the SBA until we have this put together, we can't get a uh real commitment from the, our federal representatives, our state representatives, the governor, the people we're gonna work with for the different funds that are out there and available. We just can't have those answers at this point. It makes it look like we're putting, you know, everything on the taxpayers, and it's, it's, uh, it's gonna become a huge effort moving forward to try to find them funds, identify funds, sell this not only to the taxpayers also, but also to people that are in charge and in control of those funds to start bringing that money towards us, so. We got a job ahead of us, and we can't count on that money at this point, and that's, that's per law, that we can't count on that. We're gonna sell it to our voters and then move forward from there, so, our business partners, so it's gonna be an exciting time. So thank you guys so much for, for what you've done for the school system, clarity, paperwork, uh, getting us where we need to be, uh, you greatly appreciate it.
You're most welcome, and we, we appreciate the engagement of, of the board and, and all parties involved. It's, it's been a great process, and we look forward to, to getting this done.
Tom, Rob, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you all very much as well.
You guys have a great evening.
Have a good evening. Thank you.
This is where Dan loves us shuffling paper around up here.
Hope you're all right. Is there anything else the board would like to, uh, talk to our representative from the DLR group before we let him start his journey? He's got his backpack on, ready to roll. We appreciate you coming up, and it's, uh, it's, it's been an exciting process for this county, and it's gonna be really exciting going forward, so.
It sure is. Nothing less important's done easily. Happy to answer any questions.
I don't think we have any. We're good?
Very good.
That means you've done a good job. There's no questions. Superintendent, moving on contracts.
Okay. All right, we do have one new contract uh that I would uh put before you this evening, that is the Null Education Services LLC Agreement. Superintendent recommends that the board approve that contract as presented to you.
Do you have a motion?
I'm moved.
Second.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
What exactly is this? I keep reading it, but I-
This is professional development at Mylan Park, it's paid for out of federal funds, but Donna, do you wanna get more specific?
Sure. Um, you're right, it, it's-
You're right, the agreement, Nancy, is a little bit, looks convoluted. It's a program called Building Thinking Classrooms, and it's one of a very few programs that are out there, and this is the only vendor actually that offers this program. But as you can see, it is a professional development program to assist our teachers in improving their own practice. It's very simple. There is a library that comes with this. Again, it's very much focused on our culture of literacy that we have committed to, the Third Grade Success Act, that is part of our requirements, and it really does relate to the five elements of reading, which you heard Norma talk about so well at our last meeting. So, it is simply another way to go about helping our teachers, help our students with, again, being able to build their own literacy skills and meet those elements, particularly phonics, which has been something that has waxed and waned. All of you are aware of that. It's part of what we refer to as the reading wars, honestly, and the idea here is the emphasis on teaching phonics, which is absolutely necessary. We've always believed it, but the approaches to it has been in different ways, using context clues or using actual phonetic sounds, which is what we believe and see as a way to keep our students actually being able to read by, certainly third grade. The emphasis is K one and two, and then by third grade, we need to have achieved that level of quality with our students. So, this is Midland Park, again, federal funds, Title I school, and they're required to go above and beyond what we normally do. That's the money that you have to spend at your four title schools here. You must go above and beyond what you're doing for every other school. So this is part of that plan.
And Sky, have you picked something else?
Absolutely. All of our four schools work together, but they all have a little bit of different, unique needs, so you're right. And you'll see some other things coming forward here. Eastwood is using U-Fly, which is a phonics program, and each school has designated each of the areas that we really want to concentrate on. So I got to hear a lot about that when I did the curriculum audit at Eastwood last week, and I wish you could all hear the teachers and how strongly they feel about what they've been able to do with all the resources that have been provided by this board and even the requirements for the Third Grade Success Act, and how well the interventionists and the classroom assistants and that teacher and their ability to connect with our students using these types of materials. I mean, that's the joy of the job, honestly.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the Null Education, did you recommend this?
I did.
Okay, Null Education Services, and we get our LLC agreement, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed the same? Sorry, I was paying attention too much, or not. So, Superintendent, consent agenda.
Superintendent recommends that the board approve the consent agenda as presented to include item A, expenditures exceeding three thousand dollars, B, the payment of salaries and accounts payable, item C, our panorama agreement, item D, the minutes from December twelfth, 2023, item E is the early head start November 2023 monthly report, and item F is the head start November 2023 monthly report.
Need a motion?
I move. Second.
Thank you. Any pullouts, questions, board members? Hearing none, all in favor of the consent agenda as presented, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed the same? Board member updates?
I have none.
I'm getting some questions about the dual enrollment program, how it's going. Can we get an update on that since we, well, I mean, in the next couple of months, just how the first semester went?
Yeah, we can do that.
Sandy works very closely with that, and yes, it would be time late to bring you an update. We'll add that to you.
In fact, I think we have a meeting coming up with them.
Yeah, so that'll be good timing.
Now, I just wanted to share, I was interviewed by the federal reviewer for the Head Start program, and basically, all those, I was probably asked to do it because I've done it for about twenty years, it's just easier, but they-
Because all the fingers were pointing that way.
Yeah, it was a lot easier. They, I think, are very focused on oversight, fiscal oversight, and probably more so because of the America, the Recovery Act funds and some of the revelations that have come out of that nationwide. So they wanted to be sure that we do get these reports, we do have the opportunity to ask questions, that our treasurer is monitoring, that CNI is part of it, and I just think we are at such an advantage because the Head Start and Early Head Start are part of our school system rather than a standalone that we have to figure out how to partner with. And that's just not true across the country. So it's really an advantage for our programming, and I think, from what I could ascertain, I think everything went well. The interviewers, the interview team has been different every time, the makeup of it, there was a remote person and a physical person here, but I really do think that we were able to present a cohesive program and cohesive oversight, which I don't think they always see, because they always say that. Well, they're kind of shocked every time. Like, no, it's in the minutes, all you have to do is review this, all these reports are in there, you know, we have those opportunities. So, I think that's something that we should realize we're blessed with.
I just want to add to, again, and Nancy won't say this, but they were very impressed with our board member here and her knowledge, her extensive knowledge, as you can imagine, and they don't see that. So, I want to thank Nancy personally, and I know Debbie Jones and the reviewers spoke very, very well, high accolades at Nancy's knowledge and ability to explain the board's role in all of this. So, thank you, Nancy.
You're welcome. Thank you.
State Board Member of the Year. There's a reason, just a bet.
Well, one of you will take on this federal review role in the future, and it really, the questions they ask really make you consider how things work here, and how different it is, and how we have a level of comfort in knowing there is all these different steps of oversight, from superintendent to whoever's at those schools monitoring all that and doing that work. So, very fortunate.
Jen have anything else?
No.
You don't?
It's yours. You can have it.
It's mine. I did two days of Skills USA judging in at Amtech, and me and Jen were both in the same group. It was the Careers in Education group. Wow. The first-year students, when we got done, the one first-year student, I said, too bad she can't represent us at states. They looked at me and they said, and this was before I could see the second-year group, said, actually, this year they're allowed to. Juniors are allowed to represent at the state competition. I was like, because this one, the ones, the student that won really had it together. So then we moved to today. We have seven, there was thirteen of the fourteen were there and competed yesterday. Today, there was seven that competed, and we have some future teachers, and we had some, I mean, a lot of close to perfect scores. We had one absolute perfect score. It was a kid that, I'm going to say kid, I said kid, I about messed up and said, and gave the sex away, which would lead something, because they don't know who the winner is. And I don't want to say him or her, because then they'll be like, and they watch this, which is really crazy.
Keep stammering, you're digging a hole.
Right, I'm digging a hole. Oh, I don't care.
Someone will win.
But the winner of the competition at Amtech today will win the state competition. She's got some work to do. She's got some work to do. He knows he didn't win.
Move out, I don't want to be collateral damage here.
No, it's okay. She will win the state competition. It would not surprise me if she won the national competition, is how good she was today. It was unbelievable how smooth, read aloud, the lesson plan, everything about the way it was presented was flawless.
The most impressive thing is being in a group of adults that you don't know, being asked interview questions that are random about your program and education in general, and just being able to off the cuff have that discussion is a very hard thing for adults to do, so.
Most adults.
And one of those children just was like, okay, I had no idea that you're so smart. Yeah, it's amazing.
Ended every day, both days, with to let them know that we were hiring, and that we would be ready.
Stay the course.
That's a good example right there. Some of those, some of them students will go directly into positions as an aide, and some of them are going to be four-year graduates that will be excellent, excellent teachers or something. We are blessed to have that growing program, and hopefully, we continue to push that program because it's, and recruit for that program, and get that, because it's a need we have, and you said about being selfish earlier, but I think this is one where we really have to push. Unbelievable how good them girls did, and the boy.
It's very clear in a group of people who's a natural-born teacher, like, and we could probably hire five a year out of that class in general.
Yep. It was an honor to be there, so it was good. Good stuff. One of our board members could only make it one day, so.
Sorry, I'm busy.
Hey, what's that supposed to mean? So anyhow, that is my board member update, and if no one else has anything, let's go ahead and-
I'd like to request a, I guess.
Let's wait, let's wait. Let's go ahead and get the personnel, let's get the others done so we can-
Yeah, we're going to empty the rooms.
Superintendent, if we can go on to Personnel Matters?
Absolutely. First is our personnel list. I do have one minor change for you on page one, line thirty-seven. The effective date should be twelve, four, 2023. With that minor change, Superintendent recommends that the board approve the personnel list.
Need a motion?
I move.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, all in favor of the personnel list as presented, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed the same? Moving on to the addendum.
I have no new positions for you this evening, so we'll move down to our personnel list addendum. I have no changes to the addendum. Superintendent recommends that the board approve the personnel list addendum as presented.
Need a motion?
I move. Second.
Okay, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the personnel list addendum as presented, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed the same? I do want to take a moment to mention that Board Member Barry was in what seemed like a minor rear-end collision, is why he's not here, and that was, he called me about twenty-five minutes before the meeting. I didn't want to say he wasn't going to be here until he actually didn't come, because I thought maybe he would be able to come after I talked to him, but he was, he had a car incident, and he is, that's the reason he's not here, so. But he sounded, he said his neck was a little stiff, got rear-ended, and he didn't make it, so.
He didn't make it to the meeting.
Didn't make it, yeah.
Don't say he didn't make it.
He didn't, and he didn't make it. Sorry. But he didn't make it to our meeting. Thanks for the clarification of words. He thought this was legal counsel, everyone was saying, watch what you say. But yeah, hopefully, he feels good tomorrow, doesn't get too stiff, so.
Are you ready now?
Yep, I'm ready.
I'd like to move into the executive session for personnel.
And?
I don't know, I just see the rest of it.
School safety?
School safety, yes.
All right. Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same? Okay, we can probably get rid of everyone.